Commissioner Hopson?
Here.
Deputy Director Polian?
Here.
Commissioner Singh?
Here.
Director O’Connell?
Here. Thank you, Erin. I’m looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the public conference meetings of June 8th, 2002.
Second.
Motion by Hopson, seconded by Singh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We have a couple of recognitions on the agenda tonight. Commissioner Felicia Hopson is going to start us off by saying a few words about PTSD Awareness Month. Commissioner Hopson?
Thank you, Director. As you just heard, June is PTSD Awareness Month. We take time during each of our commissioner meetings to recognize the difference and talk about topics that affect our community. Some of them may be highly publicized and others, like PTSD awareness, tend to fall under the radar. PTSD is medically recognized condition that developed from seeing or experiencing an event that involves actual or threatened death, a serious injury, intense fear, healthlessness, or horror. Some common symptoms include lack of emotion, temper, and flashbacks. PTSD is considered most common among war veterans, but many others suffer from it, including police, firefighters, and other first responders, survivors of sexual assault, and the victims of serious accidents, natural disasters, and other traumatic events. We’re now learning about cases of pandemic PTSD among people affected with COVID-19, as well as others who experience extreme anxiety or fear related to the virus. PTSD is not a mental failing or emotional weakness. It is a very real condition experienced by some of the bravest and strongest people in the world. Help is available for those who suffer from PTSD or PTSD symptoms, and treatments can lead to better quality of life. Seeking help is the first and usually most challenging step in recovery, but it doesn’t need to be. This is one of the reasons we started Burlington County Stigma Free County Initiative. We need to be upfront and open about discussing mental illness like this one so we can educate people and eliminate the stigma so often connected to them. We are committing to doing exactly that. And we want to thank all of those who are willing to join us on this critical mission. Thank you for these few minutes. Director?
Thank you, Commissioner Hopson. Tomorrow is International Public Service Day. It celebrates the importance of service to our community. Public services extend opportunities, protect the vulnerable, and improve residents’ quality of life. They strengthen our communities and bind us together as a society. That’s why we’re here. We provide services and assistance to our residents during good times and times of struggle like the world saw through the COVID-19 pandemic. The virus caused so much heartbreak, anxiety, and turmoil, but our board is proud of how our county responded and the help that we delivered. From setting up COVID-19 testing and vaccine clinics to distributing PPE and free groceries, our county made it our number-one mission to help our residents through this crisis. We continue to make these services available, even as we pivot to other issues and initiatives like eliminating stigma, improving public safety, and assisting our seniors and others who may be vulnerable. One thing I think COVID revealed was how important government can be, not just during the crisis, but every day. We’ve seen firsthand how government can make a difference: promoting Burlington County restaurants through the restaurant, sheriff’s officers inspecting child safety seats, awarding a zero-interest loan to a local dance studio that was trying to get back on its feet. Even the free outdoor movies in the parks can help families enjoy a fun night out at no expense. These are just some of the examples of what our county government does. When problems happen that appear to be beyond our control, we put our heads together to come up with creative solutions. We work together with partners, and we deliver the help our residents need. None of this happens without the dedication and effort of our county workforce. They deserve all our thanks and gratitude for the work that they perform every day. Moving on now, I’d like to invite John Smith and Mary Pat Robby up to the front. We’re celebrating the long and distinguished career of Park Superintendent John Smith. Commissioner Echols is our board liaison to the Department of Resource Conservation and the Division of Parks, so I’ll turn things over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Director. I’ve known John very briefly, so I have a few prepared remarks written down so that I can do this right. Tonight, we are recognizing our Burlington County Park Superintendent John Smith for his many contributions to our county during his more than 30-year career here. The head of our amazing park system started working for our county in the Community Development Office. He started as a loan officer in 1989 and went on to become Director of that office in 2002. He transferred to the Department of Resource Conservation in 2008 to become Superintendent of Parks. Going from Housing and Urban Development to Parks may seem so different, but 2008 was a period of tremendous growth for the park system. Bounderie Creek opened that year as the eighth county park and the fifth new park in just three years. John was tasked with managing the park system’s growing workforce, along with the development of additional parks and a regional trails network that is now the envy of every county. During his years as superintendent, John also oversaw major improvements to our countywide historic structures, including renovations to Smithville workers’ houses and the opening of the Smithville Visitor Center, the restoration of the Lyceum of History and Natural Sciences in Mount Holly, and major repairs to the historic prison museum and Smithville mansion. John has been instrumental to all the successes we’ve had with our parks. Well over 1 million people visit our county parks, museums, and galleries annually, and more come every year. We owe John a tremendous set of gratitude for all he has done and helped accomplish. We want to thank John and wish him happiness and success in whatever he seeks to accomplish next. And we have a certificate for you. Have you been taking pictures? And don’t sit down yet. Mary Pat, would you like to add anything?
Sure. I’ve had the pleasure of working with John for 15 years of his 33-year career, and I’ve gotten to know him fairly well over those years. And I know that John chose to work for Burlington County for 33 years with only one thought in mind: to make Burlington County a better place to live and raise a family. And he’s certainly done that. He’s a dedicated public servant. He works nights, weekends, long days, to make sure that the parks are well-maintained and inviting, that the parks are safe, secure, and that families come back to visit time after time. I will really miss him. I’m not quite sure he’s going to miss me. Five to six calls a day, peppering him with questions. So I thought, as a retirement gift, I would make a recording of my voice and say, “John, where are we with this? Where, where?” And then he could refer it to convince himself that he made the right decision to retire. So John, I will...
If I may, if I can compare retirement, or the announcement of retirement, to being invited to your own funeral. I’ve been hearing eulogies since I’ve announced, and some of them have really been very good. All of them have been very good, and really appreciate it. I know of at least one rumor that the board has finally decided to force me out. So if you will confirm what I’m saying, I’m not being forced out. I’d appreciate that. But it’s been terrific. I’ve gotten to work with some amazing people over the 33 years, some of whom are here tonight, which I really appreciate. It’s been a great career. It’s been a great time. I’ve loved working for the county. Never had a day where I just hated coming to work, and it’s much appreciated. I appreciate all the support that you’ve all given me, and I’ve worked with a lot of board members and a lot of staff, and it’s just been terrific. And if you indulge me, can I tell you my favorite commissioners? I’ll call them free orders, because back then they were... I was promoted to Community Development Coordinator, and I got to go to one of my first meetings. I was always nervous. And I was going before the board to ask for a cost overrun for a community development project for Florence Township. They were putting in a sidewalk, and they ran $3,000 and change short, and they needed that $3,000. So I went before the board, and Free Order Haynes said to me, “So who needs the money?” I said, “Florence Township.” I heard a little snicker. I said, “Okay.” And then Free Order, I guess it was Free Order Farias, said, “How much are they looking for?” I said, “$3,000.” And I guess it was Free Order Wu-Jin, said, “Are you sure they really need it?” And I said, “Yeah, they have to sign a certification saying that the money is in the veil of elsewhere. They need a cost overrun.” And Free Order Farias said, “Well, what the hell? Give them the money!” I said, “Okay.” And Fred Gatto was the county administrator at the time, and he slapped me on the leg, and he said, “Wait outside.” Okay. So I went outside, and as I was outside, I could hear them laughing, and I’m thinking, “Wow, this group has a great time at mission meetings.” And a couple minutes passed, and Fred Gatto stuck his head out the door and said, “Go buy a paper.” Okay. So I walked across the street. I did not have to buy a paper. The headline was there right across the front: Burlington County settles lawsuit with Florence Township for like millions of dollars. I never had to agree to that. So that was my introduction to the work with the village. In any case, it’s been okay. Thank you for the well wishes and again, and the support.
Absolutely. Thank you for all your support.
And John, I think we’re going to ask you to stay there. I think a couple of us have some remarks to make. Start with Commissioner Singh.
John, so I’ve known you for four and a half years, and now getting fifth year. And in terms of the parks, I knew that you knew everything inside out. You knew exactly how they were constructed, constructed, the trails, where the good fish was, you know, how in case I always bothered you, what should I go? What was the best time to go to? Man, you were always available as fingertips for every little thing. I remember coming in in 2018, like when we sat down across the building, talking about the Vanderbilt Park, you guys brought the whole papers out from the shelves, like this is what we have on the shelves, this is what we’re thinking. I remember that conversation going up, this is where we can have the interest and this on. I was so impressed. Like that was my first impression of you as the head of the parks, knowing your stuff, right? And I was so impressed. I’m like, this guy, like, so, I mean, it’s not surprising why our parks are so great and why we have so many events, because this guy wants them like a well-oiled machine. The design of the parks, and I have been to all of our county parks with our kids, I spent hours at each park. Each park design always impresses me how convenient it is, the trails are designed in a way you can enjoy the nature, you can be safe, you can have kids around, you can have elderly around, the access to the parks and how well-spread they are all around the county. So goodness to you, all the work that your department, I know it’s always teamwork, but there’s always a point person for everything, right? So, you know, great job at being the point person for all these years, having all these parks evolved from ground up. So sort of at due morrow to your not a funeral, to your retirement. Thank you, sir.
And it’s been a pleasure working with you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner.
So I’m next. I remember, as Delver once said, I tried to get around to some of the parks. I haven’t made it to as many as he has, but I can remember the time that I stopped out at the office in Smithville kind of unannounced, and the next thing I know, two hours later, you took time to give me a whole history, put me through the buildings. I just got to reiterate what the other commissioners said. You’re going to be missed, and you did a great job.
Wow, it’s too late for me to change my mind.
Now remember, we’ll push you back.
Listen, John, I want to thank you, and on behalf of our entire board, we want to wish you all the best in retirement. Ladies and gentlemen, after John’s story, you got a little peek behind the curtain on how county government operates. At least every once in a while, we get to laugh and joke a little bit. The other thing is, John, is you’re proof of somebody who works at something they love, they never work a day in their life. It doesn’t seem that way to you. So you’re a fortunate man, and we want to wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I’m a little jealous. Enjoy your retirement. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
The parks won’t be the same without you, but we’re going to try and do our best. I’ve said this before to other audiences and to my colleagues, this is going to be the program that Burlington County is going to be known for throughout the state, and not only that, it’s been recognized nationally, and you played a great part in that. That’s a wonderful legacy. So thanks again. Moving on to public comments on agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak on other topics will have a chance to do so later in the meeting. When it is your turn to speak, please state your full name and address for the record. And as a reminder, each speaker is limited to four minutes and may only speak once per public comment portion. Luis Lopez. Evening, Luis.
I’m going with Commissioner. Luis Lopez, 98, Lewis Drive. And I have four questions, and the very first one is, for Revolution I, it should be very same for Revolution I. That’s my opinion. Revolution K, it should be me and Luis Lopez. I’d love to see that come through.
Luis, I’m following you. You’re saying I.
Got a nomination and an appointment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. See, I like your good sense of humor. I have four revolutions. Revolution I, no, J4, 5, 12, and 15.
That’s just the contract that we’re authorizing to purchase informational items for the calendar year, Luis, on J4. Okay? And J5 is the result of contract negotiations with our Police Benevolent Association Local 249 Superior Officers. J12, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. That is, we’re requesting Park Tech Fund to do some research and give us the best plan to expand the animal shelter in West Hampton. We’re kind of out of space, or we need some additional space, so we’re going to be utilizing them to find out the best design to expand it. Okay? And for 15, that’s simply a request to advertise for bids, work on the county bridge, the 4.61 Main Street that goes Pennsac and Creek from Pennsac to Maple Shade Town.
Good. And one more thing, I could be your next director in a few years to expand every language in the world. Thank you.
Thanks, Luis. I’m glad getting this first. Is it America Phillips?
Yes, I would talk later.
Who will talk later?
Yes.
She wants to talk at the end.
Oh, okay. You want to talk on non-agenda items?
Right.
Got you, Ms. Phillips. Okay, thank you. Diana Rodriguez.
Hello, I’m Diana Rodriguez. I’m the president of FOP Lodge 166, the Union for the Burlington County Sheriff’s Officers. I would like to bring to your attention that...
Is this about agenda items?
No.
Okay. So it’s about public comment? Right, that’s at the end of the meeting.
You can give it another opportunity. Yeah, we’ll session.
That’s okay.
We’ll push you back.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on agenda items? Before we move our resolutions, I’d like to point out one in particular tonight that’s kind of important and dear to me, and that’s Resolution J28, which changes the name of Laurel Run Park in Delran to Rainbow Meadow Park. This name change reflects the long and prestigious farming legacy that has been a huge part of Burlington County history and continues on as part of our future. The park used to be farmed by the Anderson family for more than a century. And their farm stand was called Rainbow Meadow. Two members of the Anderson family are here tonight, Ray and Mal Anderson, and I’d ask them to please stand up and be recognized. These folks grew some of the best peaches you could ever buy. I got to meet Ray’s mom and dad when I moved in to Delran in 1992. I had a lot of conversations with them, and nothing against Laurel Run, there’s a little creek there that abuts their property, but I think if you talk to people in Delran, they wouldn’t know what Laurel Run is. But if you ask them where Rainbow Meadow Farm is, they’ll remember that, and hopefully now with the name change, that name will be there forever. So thank you very much. Thanks a awful lot for being here today. It’s great to see you. Now, you too. Now, I’d like to make a motion to approve Resolutions JI through J11 for unanimous consent. Motion by O’Connell, seconded by Polian. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director Polian?
Thank you, Director. I would like to move a motion, J12 through J23 for approval by unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion invited by Polian, seconded by Singh. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Echols?
Thank you, Director. I would like to make a motion on work for unanimous consent on Resolutions J24 through J13.
Motion by Echols, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Echols, seconded by Singh. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Hopson?
Thank you, Director. I’d like to move with unanimous consent, J31 through J36. Second.
Motion by Hopson, seconded by Echols. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Director. I’d like to move Resolution J37.
Second.
Motion by Singh, seconded by Hopson. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. I’m now looking for a nomination of a member from the Roman College and Burlington County Board of Trustees for an unexpired four-year term effective June 23rd, 2022 to October 31, 2022. I would like to nominate Lorraine Hatcher. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none on closing nominations. Please vote by name. Erin, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioner Echols?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopson?
Lorraine Hatcher.
Deputy Director Polian?
Lorraine Hatcher.
Commissioner Singh?
Lorraine Hatcher.
Director O’Connell?
Lorraine Hatcher. Thanks, Mary. I am appointing Robert Wells, the Small Business Loan Committee, for an unexpired one-year term effective June 23rd, 2022 to December 31, 2022. Do we have any questions from the media this evening? Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items, and how about if we start over Ms. Rodriguez first?
My apologies for signing in on the wrong form.
That’s okay. Don’t worry about it.
Okay. Once again, I’m Diana Rodriguez, president of Lodge, FOP Lodge 166, the Union for Burlington County Sheriff’s Officers. I’d like to bring to your attention that over the past two and a half years, we have had 16 officers leave the department, and only two of those departures were retirements. The staffing at the Sheriff’s Department is becoming critically low and has reached a point of being a safety issue for our officers and the public we serve. We currently, we are currently understaffed by 10 officers, with three more officers set to retire within the next three to six months. We have also had several, we also have several other officers actively looking for alternative employment. Many of these departures have occurred due to the officer salaries. This is also the prime reason why it has been difficult to fill the vacancies within the department. Several potential applicants have dropped out of the process, not because they didn’t want to work for the Sheriff’s Department, but because they couldn’t take the pay cut. Our officers were working without a contract for over four years with our salaries frozen during the duration. The reason for the frozen salaries at the time is due to falling under the 2% salary cap. In January, we received an arbitration award for a contract for the years of 2018 through 2020, and were told again that our salaries would be frozen at the 2020 salaries, and no officer would advance through the salary guide, despite the fact that the 2% cap no longer applies. This has held some officers that have worked for our department for several years at very low pay, causing them to start to look for employment elsewhere. During this timeframe, our officers worked tirelessly and selflessly throughout the pandemic. Many officers were exposed to COVID-19, and many others contracted it, which exposed our families. Most of us had to quarantine due to workplace exposures, sometimes twice or three times. The county of Burlington received over $43 million in funds under the American Rescue Act Plan, ARPA. In an effort to help alleviate some of our financial burden on our officers on January 12th, 2022, our union submitted a letter to the board requesting consideration of using a portion of the funds allocated to Burlington County under the American Rescue Act Plan to be used to provide hazard pay to our officers, which is an authorized use of the funds under Section 9901. At that time, our receipt of our letter was acknowledged by the county administrator, Ian Coleman, and she confirmed that we would receive a response to our request. On March 30th, we sent a follow-up email inquiring if we would receive a response in the near future. That email was unanswered. It is now June 22nd, and we have yet to receive a response to requests. We would like to know if the board is still considering our request at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for your comments. We appreciate it. America Phillips, please.
Good evening, everybody in general, commissioner, and residents. I was here several weeks ago. I was here several weeks ago.
I'm sorry, your name and town for the record?
My name is America Phillips. I live in 115 Tennessee Trail, Brownsville, New Jersey. That will be Pemberton Township. I've been living in this county for most forty-three years. I noticed in my development, several years ago, the commissioners brought public transportation to Pemberton Township. But not our development. We have the land development from Pemberton Township. And from Country Lake to Presidential Lakes, the development is less than six miles. I noticed the public transportation park is bussed in Country Lake. He sat there between twenty-five to forty minutes, waited for the route to return back. In those forty-five, twenty-five minutes or forty minutes, he can drive it down to Presidential Lakes. In the entrance, they listen, pick it up, residents. We had a beautiful library in Brownsville. Our children were never able to go and ride the bus to go to the library. And except the parents can pay them, because in the families, both got to work or one work and one stay home, and it's only one vehicle. That's left them without nothing there. Okay, my next step may it is, I brought it to the attention to the commissioner in the last minutes in reference to the Route 530 and Route 70. Several years ago, they were working on it. Less than two years ago, they were working in there. I figured out there is a warning light that when put it there, Route 70 is a very heavy traffic road. And 530 also there. But the only thing they put it there is a stop sign. We need warning yellow lights or a traffic light. We want to save it. The people who bring the money to this state for the summertime, right now, is very busy road. Been several accidents in there. We don't have crosses yet. But we can avoid that too. Now, my next step I'm wanting coming up on Four Mile Road, Route 772. That has only signs and poles. Doesn't, those things doesn't save the life. We need warning light like Route 206 South, the circle. They take care of the circle. But they ignore the Four Mile, and that's not right. Right now, I drove through there, I leave, leaving Four Mile away from the place. I just hope the least they take in consideration for the four-alue light rush, they can cut the grass there. They cut it about one month ago. It's getting high. You don't want to put light, don't want to put nothing, guess what? They get in tight and put new poles there, new sign. Sometime you drive by, there is a car in the middle of the circle. You do not know how that there, there is pieces, not a whole car. Because it's very danger place. And as all of you are there, I know the resident in this, no, I'm sorry. The resident put you in there. You didn't got there because you want to be there. I see you in the wait, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Joanne Mortimer?
Uh, I've got some hair there. Joanne Mortimer, 202 South Boulevard Avenue in Maple Shade. I too was here a few weeks ago, and I presented you with the same handout. You're probably going to look familiar. And just like John Smith, I'm trying to make things better. Except this time it's for my hometown, which is Maple Shade. And one of our main concerns is with our crosswalks. And I'm sure you remember, I was here before. Now, I'm just not coming, you know, alone by myself without telling anyone. I've talked to the township manager. I've talked to township council, Advisory Board of Commerce, which I'm a member of. And they are telling me that the county is holding this up as far as making these improvements for the crosswalks. Uh, if you'd like to come see them for yourself and have a little fun at the same time, we're having our food truck festival on Monday between 5:00 and 8:30. So, I'm inviting you to that also. Uh, but we do need some help with these crosswalks. I mean, they're very dangerous, and I've seen people almost get hit by cars. As I told you before, my dad got killed on Main Street. So, yeah, it's one of my points on my agenda. And also, the township is telling me that the county frowns on closing Main Street for events. So, I'm asking you if that is true. I mean, normally for our food truck festival, we would have closed Main Street. Or for a holiday festival coming up, we would have closed Main Street. However, from what they're telling me is that the county frowns on rerouting the buses. Is that true?
I see our Public Works Director standing in the back of the room, I think, for no reason.
The county routinely authorizes to use power to close roads for events. They must apply for a road occupancy permit for there to be no cost. If they're going to detour the traffic, they have to provide an approvable detour that we can physically deter detours into municipal roadways. So, at the end of the day, that information you received is not accurate.
Okay.
If someone needs to contact me directly, that's fine.
Okay.
With regards to your comment of a few weeks ago, I have had the signage looked at, the, for the commissioners, the lighted crosswalks. They're using fixtures that are actually used in airplane runways, and they're very difficult to source. But I do have our county electrician looking into getting replacements to get them operational again.
Oh, you're wonderful. Now, how about the side lights? Anything?
Side lights, if we're going to do the, if I can't, if I can't get the other ones replaced, I'll look at the side lights. I'm looking to do what's in the neighborhood first.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much for looking into that.
You're welcome.
I hadn't heard back from anyone. So, I figured I would take another trip up here. Uh, also, one of the things I'm concerned about, I don't know my time's up. Uh, does the county have rental caps for tenants? I'm very concerned about the amount of rent that tenants are paying in the county, specifically Maple Shade. Uh, and I was wondering if there's any cap on rentals.
By the county? No, no.
By the county.
I think we have any authority for that.
Right. Does the township have that authority?
Yes.
Is that a real township?
They do. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for covering this. Luis Lopez.
I would like to be the last one, given all the people. Yes.
You're lucky you're a season ticket holder. Mal Anderson.
Uh, Mal Anderson, 725 Perkins Lane, Edgewater Park. I originally came tonight to support my cousin Ray Anderson, who's a direct descendant of the farmers in Delran, and I, uh, I want to compliment the commissioners for changing that name of the park. Uh, it's more, uh, more realistic than the Laurel Run, uh, name that was originally given to it. I'm Ray's cousin, and we've been friends for years and years, and I actually worked for his pop doing some mowing after work and everything in the orchards, and it was a great farm. And I think you all probably heard that or know it firsthand. However, tonight, I'm here for a second reason, and that is, um, asking that if the county commissioners would look into making Perkins Lane and Cooper Town Road, Cooper Town Delanco Road, a four-way stop. Uh, recently, both Delanco and Edgewater Park have, uh, either built or are in the process of building huge warehouses, which will, uh, I'm sure employ many people. Many employees will be using those roads as well as a large quantity of tractor-trailers. And Cooper Town Road has the right-of-way now, which is a long, it's a long road, and, uh, Perkins Lane has stop on each side to cross Cooper Town Road. So, uh, there have been, uh, two other intersections which Commissioner Pullian's well aware of, and some of you may be too, of Bridge Bar Road and Cooper Town Road, and also Burlington Mount Holly Road, or whatever that road's called vocally, and Cooper Town Road, they're four-way stops. So, fortunately, we have a blinking light there that some people adhere to and some don't. I think that, uh, it would be worthwhile to look into making that intersection a, uh, four-way stop. One of the sad things from being, uh, you know, longtime resident and also, uh, I'm just an old person and I, you know, I get around a lot and I know from driving for my work all over the Delaware Valley that this, this intersection isn't just an easy one to negotiate because the crossroads are not at ninety-degree angles. They're, it's a little bit skewed, or, you know, less and more angles, anyway. I would appreciate it if the commissioners would look into making that a four-way stop. And I don't think it's going to hurt the people any. And if you would, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Michael Tam?
Michael Tam, 24 Westminster Drive, Leisure Town. Uh, I have the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Wrote back something. Eighty years ago, June 22nd, 1942, Congress officially recognized the Pledge of Allegiance. So, it's eighty years ago today that they're recognized with it. Another thing reflecting on it, people back then appreciated what they had. You didn't hear complaints today. Everybody's saying rights, rights, rights. They don't appreciate what they have. They complain more than appreciate it. And I think it's a mistake. But I'm really here for tuition for young people in Burlington County for college. The college first started back in the sixties, and the concept came up for community college. The county people were really enthused about it. And when it started, it was relatively very, very reasonable. And the county contributed a lot more money than what it is today. Today, the price has gone up quite a bit and everything. I think the county ought to institute a program for tuition, start out with 25% of the tuition for any resident who could prove they're a resident for two years of Burlington County, and they have a passport. The passport is a legal document that approves your age, and if they violate it, it's a federal offense. And I think after county initiate the program the first year, the second year, they propose it to 50%. And maybe even 75% eventually, and stop at 75%. But I think it's needed, and it's not going to cost that much money to initiate it. I think the total amount of tuition by a college is approximately 20, 20 mil, I think it is. I'm not sure. It's about 20 million a year. That's just tuition fees that come in on it. But the county ought to do that. I mean, this thing now, the county doesn't seem to have any recognition for education. The image is not there anymore. And I think it's about time the freeholders did it. Yes, it may cost you a few million a year to start off with it. But I think it's well worth it in the long run to develop a tuition program for the residents of Burlington County. You have to be a resident for two years and have a passport and prove it in order to be eligible for tuition. Tuition-only costs I'm talking about, no other fees. And I'd like to see the freeholders entertain this and possibly do something about it. I think it'd be worthwhile in the long run. Like I said, at the beginning, the freeholders used to contribute quite a bit of money to keep the tuition down back in the sixties and seventies. And over the years, it just dwindled down, and the cost has gone up for a student. And possibly, you might be able to initiate a loan program at a very low interest rate for 25% of the tuition. So, you're tapping out a 25% on the loan, and the other one, you would start off the first year at 25% and then increase it until maybe hopefully up to 75% eventually on it. But I think you ought to start doing some calculations with it and some serious thinking about it. But it's about time to do something about it. The cost of tuition now is prohibitive for many people. Yes, there are grants, but the grants don't apply to that many people. That's the problem.
Thank you, Ms. Tam. Ann Quinn?
Good evening. Ann Quinn, 404 Red Feather Trail, Brownsville, New Jersey. Couple of things I want to discuss tonight with the commissioners here. First and foremost, I am immensely disappointed in this board and the treatment of our sheriff's officers. While I am not, while I am not a law enforcement officer in any way, shape, or form, I come from a household that is. Okay, and what? The five of you sit up there, and each of you are paid to be a county commissioner. And if I'm not mistaken, each of you are paid about 10 grand a year to hold the position that you hold, amongst other things that you receive. The attitude of, "We don't have the funds, especially for our public servants, our sheriff's deputies, our police officers, our fire ENTs and all that, is appalling to me. And really, the first thing you guys can do is take your salaries and put it towards the sheriff's deputies and give them a fair contract. Many a times, as a child, I watched my father come home. My father was a police officer for another city for 23 years. Prior to that, he served the nation in combat when I was just born. But he always put himself last. The people were what was important to him. I am sick and tired of you guys playing politics, especially with our police officers and our sheriff's deputies. Many a times, my father would come home and I would see as a young child, and this is still in my head like it was yesterday. He would come home scraped and battered and bruised, to the point that he was beat up so bad doing his job that I wasn't sure what was going to happen to my dad. So, the fact that you guys have money that was, that was provided because of the pandemic, they are first and foremost should be thought about and put on your list first. And quite frankly, as a taxpayer, I'm struggling to put food on my table, and I don't have much to give. But if I had 20 bucks in my pocket right now, it's not much, but the point of the matter is, I'd give it to them because they're important. I know how important law enforcement is. I know how important our soldiers are. And I just, I don't like the fact that you guys just sit there with a blank look on your face. "Mr. Singh, I think, I, I'm surprised." You know, you have your head down like you could care less what I had to say. But I'm a taxpayer. I pay your salary because that's out of my paycheck. I will be back at every meeting until this matter is resolved with the sheriff's deputies. They, they provide an important function in our county. Many a times, I was in the court building doing my job, and they were there. And they're there- And they're there even when they're not on duty. Stop playing politics with the money, with taxpayers' money and the money that you're given. Stop trying to decide who gets it and who doesn't because they need to get it right now. And you all need to, in my opinion. You don't earn your paycheck, not in my book. Not in my book. Ten grand may not sound like a lot of money to you, but they got families to raise. I'm sure they got kids to raise and food to put on the table. So again, playing politics with money is just totally wrong, inexcusable, and unacceptable. Since when are deadlines important to this government and county?
Those are the rules of the board, Ms. Quinn. You know them.
Yes. And the rules of the, and the rules of law is you appointed, you appointed Ms. Echol illegally and didn't care less about a deadline that was written into law.
Ms. Quinn, thank you very much. See you in a couple of weeks.
Yes, you will.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else with comments for non-agenda items? Last call. Oh, Luiz, I forgot. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm from the county freeholders known as the commissioner. Mary, thanks for the picture upload. Mama loved every picture of it. She loved to send me. She just wanted to say good pictures, man. And she said, "How long did it take you to get there?"
I'll tell you later.
Yeah, okay. The second is, one thanks to our township of Mahaw, being here for the first time. There's Tara Asstrun, she's in the back, attending a freeholder meeting. Appreciate her for coming here to see, you know, what's going on at the county level. Second is, one picture to the people who showed my video ten times over the last meeting. It went up. And one question, it's a, I don't know if it's a genuine question, but a question on a commissioner of Burlington County, who's a Democrat, is a person who tried to interfere for another township to control another township. Who should you talk to? To Joe, who's a gentleman, or... We had a lot of intimidation at the coming election. People intimidated other people, you know, to vote, you know, force vote, as I said. And like I explained at the last meeting, people were taking pictures of the tally vote on the wall. They should not be allowed any, any photo pictures. Well, if you could strengthen this incoming election on November, better strengthen my man, better rules. And our last two is, any information on the Sancho Bridge?
No, there's no update.
And what is the staff level of the sheriff? Do you know that question?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't.
And I'm still waiting for a response for our counterpart that we probably can, is, where is Cave Gaze? We see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Luiz. Anybody else? Last call. Okay, then we're moving on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Echo, you have anything for us to see?
Thank you, Director. Again, thank you everyone for coming out and participating in the process. We do value feedback. And I wanted to give my thanks to all of the firefighters and other volunteers who have been out in the Horton State Forest battling that fire for so many days, and that it is nearly contained, and I'm very thankful for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hopson?
I would just like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Stay home safely.
Commissioner Stain?
Oh, thank you. I take extensive notes. Ms. Rodriguez, we hear you. I do remember receiving that letter from your FOP regarding hazard pay. I remember there was a discussion. I don't know why there was no response. You know, once you write a letter, even if there's no response, usually there's a communication back. So I apologize, I don't know why you have not received a response from our office to your letter. That, I don't have an answer to that. Ms. Joanne, I think I'm going to mess up your name, I'm sorry. Morrison from Maple Shade. The state does not give the county any authority to control the rents, but there's a law that allows municipalities to establish their own rent control or rent stabilization boards. So each municipality can do it on their own. State does not bar them. So that may be something you want to go back to Maple Shade and have them establish a board, especially nowadays when the living wage and the, our rent and gas prices have not caught up with each other. Maybe some advisory board that can make a recommendation to fix some sort of a way to control that rent. It's a national discussion, but New Jersey does allow each municipality to do that. Some of the big cities already do that, it's just in South Jersey. I'm not aware of any municipality in South Jersey that actually has a similar board. But the process and the framework is there, but that would be a venue to pursue. The four-way, I know exactly the flashlight you're talking about at Edward Park. Because I have driven from 130 going toward Thomas, my cousin lives there. Two four-way stops, and the third one is a flashlight. That's how I know exactly when to make a turn, once I hit the flashlight. So I agree, the four-way stops, they weren't great. The third one was also a four-way stop, it would have solved a lot of the problems. And I would have a great Monday. So that is definitely... Do, and the chef's oven. One of the last speakers. I'm sorry I sometimes look down because I have to take a lot of notes, and I try to keep track of all the notes. Coincidentally, only an hour or so ago, we had a meeting about it, where I actually brought up about the salaries. And I did say that I don't mind losing an election if we can figure out a way to increase the salaries, if there's a blowback to, you know, the argument is you have to increase taxes, and you can afford everybody and so on. That's something I'm willing to lose election on. For me, it's not about my position and so on. At the end of the day, we take oath to serve the county residents. And that doesn't mean somehow we're directly doing it. We're serving the county through our employees. And the sheriff's officers are our employees. The turnover, sixteen left and only two retirees within the past two years mentioned, and three on the way to Park, you know, we are aware of that. It's not just sheriff officers, the corrections officers, our 911 Center Public Safety Building, you know, you ask any department. We hear continuously the same message about the salaries in the county being one of the lowest, if not the lowest, throughout for every profession there is. And I, you know, it's something, our salaries are not, you know, something that I would, I would wish, I would want these numbers to be where they are right now. But it's an internal discussion. It takes two to tangle, but it takes a majority to move anywhere else. Maybe at some point, we'll find the monies to make everybody wishes come true. But right now, it's the, what you said is appreciated, well-understood by everybody. Something hopefully soon we can figure out a way to reward people to the level of the work they do for us. That's all I have for tonight, Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director Polian?
Thank you, Director. I want to start off by, once again, thanking the park heads and directors for the work that they do every day for the residents. We all know that you're the worker bees. And if you don't do what you do, nothing basically gets done. One thing I do want to put out about the comments about our particular salaries, I'd ask everybody to look up commissioner wages that are given out in the state. And I'm proud to say, we are the lowest paid in the entire state. So in step with, you know, the struggles that we all have with the wages now and the economy being what it is. Several years ago, we took our salaries and cut them in half. And I ask all of you to go out there and verify what I'm saying. We are the lowest-paid commissioners in the entire state, not just counties. As far as Mel bringing up the lights, I'm very much aware. And I will be talking with our engineer. As you know, I've said it time and time again, our engineer for the county is probably one of the finest in the state. And there's very little that gets by him. One of the things that I really admire about him is he takes the hard, the stuff that comes to him. And generally, if it's something that can't be done, I can assure you, there's a really good reason why we're not able to do it. Okay? There's either construction constraints, or there's... I am totally amazed at what a lot of our people have to go to. You know, people look to us to go ahead and govern. But we are governed by the state, and we're governed by the federal government. And day after day, I'm amazed that you try to take a step to do something only to come to find out that, oh, you can't do that because this is, this is a rule that's at the state level, or you can't do this because it's something that blocks us at the federal level. So I can assure you that anytime we have an opportunity to get something done with the help of our department heads, and we really want to do it. Okay? Thank you all for coming. I do appreciate your comments. And as a lot of people see, I'm that guy with my head down too. But I can tell you, I take lots of notes because I have a piss-poor memory, and I need to take the notes. So thank you all for coming, and be safe when we...
Thank you, Deputy Director. I'd like to congratulate John Smith again, and wish him all the best in his retirement. And I'd like to congratulate and give best wishes to Ring Hatcher and Rob Wells in their new positions. You know, earlier in the meeting, we talked about it being International Public Safety Day. I had the occasion this morning to attend a viewing for a man I didn't know. I went there to express our condolences as a board to his family. And the gentleman's name is probably not known, maybe outside of Mount Laurel or maybe in the first responder community. But his name is Richard Tremper. And he served as an EMT instructor for our county from 2004 to 2017. In 2015, he served as one of the lead EMT instructors for the program, prior to its transition to our partnership with Rowan College of Burlington County and Virtual Health. Rich was dedicated to ensuring that every EMT trainee received the best instructions possible so that the citizens they serve would get the best available emergency medical care. We're saddened by the loss of Richard, and will keep his family in our thoughts and prayers. We thank them and Rich for his service to Burlington County's residents. And I can't tell you about over the last four years, how many people I've met, like Rich, who no one will ever know their name or know what they do, but they add to our community in Burlington County, the wonderful place that it is till there. You heard Commissioner Echo talk about the forest fires. I too would like to thank the first responders that were down there and fighting the fire. And it's too early to tell, but there have been reports suggesting that the fire was started by an illegal campfire. All I can ask is, you know, we all know how precious the pine lands are to us. When you're in there, you know, just let's please be careful. It's a beautiful, beautiful place, and there's really nothing like it for Boston and Washington DC. And finally, yesterday, I had the pleasure, along with my colleague Commissioner Hopson, to attend graduation ceremonies at BCIT. And it was wonderful seeing the excitement of the students and their families on this milestone event, especially seeing it in person. The 2022 graduating class at BCIT secured over $5 million in scholarship money. So we just want to stand on behalf of our entire board, congratulations to the students and their families, the teachers, the staff, and the administrators. Good on y'all. Everybody safe home to you, and thank you for taking the time to come out here. Is she here? I need to see her. Christine, where are you? Are you hiding?
Yes, she is.
I tagged you, and then I thought he's left. We're going to have an event in two days. Tonight, we say goodbye to someone who won't be with us at our next meeting.
Get up, get up.
Christine Gennelli has served our county for six years. We think the world of her. We want to wish her all the best. She's moving on to bigger and better things. And understand and know that you're always welcome to come back here, Christine. Thanks for everything. On that note, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.